Quarum, Chip, if I can get you to do the invocation, please.
Glad to. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this night that you have given us to do the town's business. Pray for our board that is here tonight. Also pray for the presenters. Father, let them be clear in their presentation. We just thank you for this great town that we live in. We thank you for the leadership, the police, the fire, Lord, that just take care of us. Just guide us through this meeting and give us wisdom, direction, and guidance, Lord. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chip. We have two minutes to approve. We'll approve first the minutes for the January 23rd, 2023, the regular meeting. Can I get a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? The second approval is for the February 2nd, the called meeting that we had here. It was a three o'clock meeting. So if I can get a motion for that approval?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? So those two have passed. John, any addition, deletions of agenda items? Reports? Nothing? No old business, so we'll step right into the new business. Discussion and recommendation of ZC 23-1 filed by LRH Holdings LLC to request permission to develop the property for a commercial office building with associated parking frontage to exceed code requirements for a property located at 1111 Lawyer's Row, tax parcel number 135381-60. John, how you want to proceed?
I'd ask the applicant, so the representative applicant, to go through this presentation that they presented up here.
Okay. As you come through the mic, state your name and your address, please.
Good evening, all. My name is Dan Soder with V3 Companies. I live at Gastonia, 428 Robinson Road, Gastonia. First off, I just want to say thank you all for seeing the presentation that we hear and giving us the opportunity to present to you guys. So thank you very much. So yeah, so we got a site located on Evans Road and Lawyer's Road. Colin Brock is also with VC, V3 Southeast, Austin Coleman, both of them are not here tonight. We have, of course, Terry and Roy, basically the architect and owner respectively. But I will be representing basically all of them here tonight. So again, as I mentioned, the site is located on Lawyer's Road and the intersection with Evans Road. It's just off of 51. It's only about a mile or so down from here. So I drove right by the site on the way over here. Here's a little zoomed up version. It's about 6.02 acres. It's a mostly wooded site. It's got an intermittent stream. There's not really much to it. It does have a little bit of challenging topography where the stream is. It does drop off quite a bit. But of course, I do want to emphasize that we're not developing anything south of the existing stream. And by south, it's planned south, of course, as you're seeing right now. There's also an existing sanitary sewer easement there. So basically, from that line down, is not going to be developed. So here's our overall site plan. The stream and sewer easement are toward the middle where those darker dash lines are. We have offsets for stream buffers and whatnot. But you have two entrances for the site. You have one off of Evans, which is that S curve driveway up into the parking lot. And then you have the other entrance off of Lawyer's Road there, which will be a right-in, right-out only. So of course, as you mentioned, we are looking to do a rezoning. And the rezoning is really only to accommodate the increase in parking because we're above the 25% threshold. So everything else is pretty much by right for this zoning, for this property. Here's just a quick zoning summary. We're providing roughly 242 parking spaces, about a 55,000 square foot building. We're adding a pedestrian kind of island area in the corner of Evans and Lawyer's. Be a nice little scenic area for people as basically everyone crosses through that area. Here's just a conceptual sketch. So Evans Road would be on the left where that S curve driveway is, and Lawyer's Road is on the far side of the proposed building. And what you're seeing here is a surface lot right behind the building. And then we're going to have a, we're going to call it like a submerged parking deck where the top of the deck is basically at grade and level with the other side of the proposed parking. And that will be fire-rated going across, of course. So fire apparatus will be able to enter from Evans and continue all the way through into Lawyer's, or come in from Lawyer's and exit via Evans, either way. Here's just a cross-section taken basically through that deck that I was just talking about. And like I said, the top of the deck is at grade, and that's where you'll be able to enter directly into the building. And for overflow, you'll have basically below-grade parking, essentially. And we do plan to screen that at-grade parking with a, basically like a half-height wall, which is a little hard to see, but it's to the left of that person, which is to the left of that right-of-way line that we're showing. And that will also be screened with shrubs and other landscaping. Here's just some building elevations for what we're thinking would basically fit well with the area. These are the side elevations, of course. And that's it. Any questions?
Yeah. Chip, I'll start with you.
Yeah, thank you. Good presentation. On the entrance off of Evans, how far back from 51, excuse me, from Lawyer's is that?
Um, that's a good question.
I know that gets backed up pretty heavy during the afternoons.
It's a couple hundred feet. I'd have to go back and actually double-check to see. I'd have to scale back on that. But it's probably close to a couple hundred feet. I know the turn lane, we're proposing at least 125 feet. It might be up to 150. I'd have to double-check. But that would, that would put us in the neighborhood of about 200 feet back from the intersection, roughly.
Okay. And the entrance up on the other end dumps out into Lawyer's. How close is that to the existing houses that are there? Pretty much right next to those?
It's close. The first parcel there, the dwelling is actually located on the opposite side of the lot. So it's not exact, or excuse me, their driveway is located on the far side. So it's not right up a budding. So you have whatever that part, the frontage of that parcel, that would be that distance. I would say a good 75 feet is what I would estimate right now. But of course, I can go back and measure.
That's fine. Now, is that going to be when you leave this and turn back out on Lawyer's? Is that going to be a right turn only?
Yes, correct.
Okay. That's all I've got right now.
That's fine. Kenny, anything?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. It was good.
Thank you.
I'm trying to remember that intersection of Evans now. What, are y'all adding another lane, a right turn lane to that?
Yes, correct. So right now, there's just a straight lane in and an entrance and an exit lane, essentially, for Evans Road. And we'd be adding, I don't know if we could zoom in on that, or maybe. But we are proposing to add a right turn only lane on, from Evans onto Lawyer's. Yes. And that also comes with a little bit widening of the entrance from Lawyer's onto Evans. We were told there was actually a little bit of complaints about the way that radius is, where it basically comes off that guardrail and onto Evans. So that would also basically happen. So it's a little hard to tell, but traveling north on Evans, it does kind of, it has that weird little chicane in there. We're actually proposing to just straighten that off. This way, you can, you can make a bigger radius there, and it will be a better flow for traffic coming off of Lawyer's.
And did y'all say something about a signal light? Is that a signal light, or is it just a light?
So there's no signal there currently. But we are, we are looking at doing that. It's most likely that it's going to end up happening. So we're going to end up coordinating with DOT and seeing what they want and what we can accommodate there.
Okay. And I guess you've got just this one stormwater control measure?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a mixed system. And what I mean by that is, we'll obviously collect the stormwater into an underground basin. And that'll detain the larger storms, like 25, 50, 100. And what we're going to have is an outlet control structure that's going to bleed off the water quality setup to a surface sand filter, which is just planned south of the underground detention and the surface parking lot. So that'll handle the water quality portion of it. And then the underground detention system will carry the larger storms.
Okay. So is that the proposed SCM where the sand filter is going?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's all I've got. Eric?
Yeah, I mean, really quick with this, while we're on the signal. John, has there been any discussion with the DOT? I mean, is this just a?
Yeah, well, so the discussion at this point, so the traffic signal, DOT is looking for traffic signal. The town, that's like, is looking for the traffic signal. And then also, the other improvements are shown on the plan, which includes improvements on Evans, the turn lane, and expanding the median power grid control. The traffic signal is required. Now, what the conversation is, and what the board commissioners, is do we want it to be decorative? And that is something that the applicant and the town board, and most likely the manager and company, they're going to have that conversation. But as far as the traffic signal, that's, that's going to happen. And with the traffic signal also comes crosswalks. And with crosswalks, you have to have the pet signal. So we'll have that as well.
Good deal. My next question is, I guess, more or less, and intended use of the building. Can you speak a little bit to that? I mean, it looks like it's three stories. Is Messer Financial planning on using all three stories, or?
Yeah, so they're, they're looking at big growth numbers right now. So it's going to be a lot of office space in the upper stories. And that, that's basically what the extra parking is for, for the employees to come in and utilize that. But the lower, the lower levels, I believe, are going to be more retail-oriented for, you know, at-grade pedestrians coming in, and as well as parkers coming in. So it'd be the perfect mixed use of retail down below and office space up high.
Is there any, like, estimates as to how many employees would be using the building right now, or?
About 100.
Okay. And that's without the base level of retail?
Correct.
Got you. That's all I've got right now.
Okay, yeah. Couple questions. The deck height, I mean, what kind of deck height are y'all looking at, like underneath?
So underneath, we're, since it's not going to be required to be fire access, we're looking at a lower deck height, just for, of course, cost savings. But clear height, I think we're thinking about, about in the nine-foot realm, possibly less. I mean, we'll see. We're still, we're still running some cut-fill numbers on this. So that'll obviously dictate, because like I said, this is a little bit of a challenging site toward the center where the grade drops off quite a bit. So.
Because I, I've got a friend of mine in Louisville who built one of these. And even though he had signs and he had everything else, they got vehicles stuck in there. They got vehicles that damaged the sprinkle lines, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah.
Oh, it's definitely understood.
Yes. So what's your schedule on this? Do y'all have a schedule yet?
In terms of getting the construction document package? Um, I mean, if we get the go-ahead, we go ahead right away. And it'll be, I don't know, what do you think? A month after?
It's probably three, four, most permitted, and 18 months, probably somewhere there in construction schedule.
Okay.
Give or take a couple months.
Yeah. John, decorative light, what is a decorative light?
It's like a mastiff. So if you look at this light out here?
Right.
That would be a decorative mastiff.
Okay, yeah.
And that was a little different where Chickley did all of that. Now, probably a similar arrangement would be, if you recall, when Publix came in, Styles Corporation came in, as the app became public. And that was a traffic signal required in the decorative conversation with the board's hallway, cautionary of some sort.
Yeah.
But same thing there, at that signal there, with that bright concrete.
Right.
So that's what we mean by that.
So is there a common, are we looking at a common design for the town, or are we just whatever pops up?
No, I don't know if we've gotten to that. I mean, the ones that usually are going to happen, they look very simple. But I haven't heard anyone say that it'd be a system.
Yeah, okay.
And then the other decorative part is, do you want stamped concrete for the crosswalk, or do you just want paint? So that would be the other decorative part.
Okay, okay. That's all I have. Anybody else?
Yeah, I got one more thing. I know you're not even to this point yet. But is this going to be a permitted parking deck where the employees will have a sticker that shows that they're parking? The reason I ask that is, the way we're growing in downtown Mint Hill, could this be used for public parking after hours? I mean, it's not, it's not a make or break deal. I'm just, just, just a, just a question I'd throw out there.
I, I think the current thought is the lower portion of the deck will not be. I'm not saying it wouldn't, I'm not saying it couldn't be. But I think at this point, it would probably not. But we can definitely open the discussions further at some point and, and see where, where things take us, and see, obviously, where the economy goes, and if these, these growth numbers are really there or not. So we'll see.
Sure. I mean, you know how we're just starved for parking in Mint Hill. It's, you know, an after-hours opportunity there would be good.
Yeah, for sure. Oh, thank you.
Yeah, good. Anybody else? No further discussion. I'll, I'll entertain a recommendation motion.
So are we on ZZ 23?
Yeah, yeah, number A.
Yeah, I would make a motion for, is this a favorable?
Add this in.
Favorable recommendation for ZZ 23-1, property owner, LRH Holding, tax parcel number 135-381-60.
Read this out.
Is that any separately?
No. You read into the, the motion, right? Either way. Yeah, do it that way.
When I present it to the board, I do separate.
So we need to hold thing?
Yeah.
All right. ZZ 23-1 is found to be consistent with the land use plan. The land use plan, downtown sub-area plan indicates office employment. Office employment is described as mixed-use areas targeted as a primary location of job-gathering uses in settings that meet today's workplace expectations. Therefore, ZZ 23-1 is found to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information presented and reviewed with this petition.
Now, our attorneys are happy. Can I get a second to this motion?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
All right, moving along. Item B, discussion and recommendation of ZZ 23-2 filed by 8235FR LLC to request a rezoning from IGCZD to IG to allow self-storage and vehicle-storage property located at 8227 Fairview Road, tax parcel numbers 1390111, 0119, 01123, 01112, and 01147. And John?
All right, let me get this ready. So I'm going to ask the applicant to come up, do the same thing, just go through the presentation from the public hearing, and then get into the questions.
Okay.
Good evening. Tom Daniel, 401 West Park, Peachtree City, Georgia. I'm the program manager for MiniMac, now Modbox. The main goal here is to do three things, well, four things, actually. First and foremost, we'll be revising, renewing, and bringing the stormwater, the entire stormwater system up to current Mecklenburg Code. Also, we will be revitalizing the entire site by doing sort of a removal and relocation of existing exterior storage located where we're proposing the new multi-story climate-controlled building, the pink one that you see on there. We will also be, they, as part of this purchase, they purchased the commercial building and the construction lay-down yard to the, I guess it's planned west here, where we're proposing to relocate and revitalize our exterior parking, RV boat parking. There will no longer be, if you're, if you're familiar with this property at all, which I'm sure you are, there will be no longer just storage yard. It will be specifically for vehicles of which can be moved at any time. And so our purpose is, we will be going in there, behind there, clean up the construction yard, the construction lay-down yard from the construction company, and then clean it up and move our parking there. We are also going to be closed, well, let me, we're going to be relocating our main entrance. So the entrance that everybody's currently familiar with off Fairview in the front will be left for the fire marshal, but will only be emergency access only with a knot box. Our main entrance now will be located past the fire station on MiniMac Drive. We will also have another drive or another entrance located just before you get to our proposed parking. There's a driveway, if you're familiar, between the current fence line and the commercial building. And we will have, so, and this, we'll do two things. I know a lot of people in the neighborhood, in the area, when you're trying to come in and out of the storage, we get back up on Fairview. It's a very busy road. So this will get all of the traffic off of Fairview. And furthermore, we're going to take our office, our current office is in the commercial building on Fairview. We're moving it back to the pink building on your site plan, just to give us a better, give us a better face, look, and sort of control over the entire property. Let's see, I have the, here is sort of our artistic rendering of the building. Instead of going vertical, because we have topography out there, we're going to do much like what you saw just before with the parking deck. We're going to build this into the slope, therefore, not creating any visual obstructions or visuals to the neighbors to the east or plan east. Another, if you're in the front of our building or the fire department side looking down, we will have some exterior units there. But again, heavily landscaped where we can. There's an existing power line that runs down our eastern property, but we are going to add landscaping where we can. Just a rear look at our building, so you can see that the bi-level is sunken into the ground. All-new paving, new drainage, redirecting all of the site drainage that occurs from all five of our properties to the middle of the site, and then into a new, larger detention pond, bringing it up to code. Again, just another rear sight. Oh, good, you did, so I didn't know you got today. So that's great. This is the enlarged parking area that is located behind the commercial. And it, and I wanted you to see, and I don't have a pointer, but we have that new access gate located there. So it's almost 210 feet from Fairview Road. So there's plenty of stackability for boats and RVs to get off of the road and enter into the site. Another blow-up is, this is the one of the building. The one thing you'll see missing here that we've been working with staff on is, we're going to install, at the end of MiniMac, we're going to install a round, excuse me, a cul-de-sac there for turning around of all, you know, not only public vehicles, but our vehicles, or whatever. If they miss the office, and again, we have our gate relocated to the end of MiniMac. We're going to work with staff on the MiniMac Drive. We've been talking, we know there's some repairs and/or cleanup of MiniMac Drive itself. And so we'll be working with staff on that as well. And now I'll open it up if you have any questions.
I'll start down my right. Eric? Uh, yeah, just a couple of questions. Good presentation. The climate-controlled storage area, is that going to be 24/7 accessibility, or?
At this point, I, I'll have to check back with you on that. I answered in, in council that it would not be. And I still think that's going to be the case, is that we will not do 24/7 on that. Due to the close proximity of the residential and area, but I will verify that.
Okay. And then that earlier, I think it was about the second picture of the elevation of the climate-controlled building? Yeah. Does this, I guess, for lack of a better term, does this berm currently exist between the residential properties and that?
We're already below by almost 10 feet from the existing residential to plan east. And so that's why we're, we're actually digging it down or lowering the site even more so that we're lower than the residences that are located to our plan east there.
And I guess along that same line, is there mature landscape already, or will that all be fresh?
Some is there, as we, as I stated, let me see if I can, we have an existing power line that runs directly along the property lines between us and the residences. There are some mature trees along the fence line, which we will leave. And then, as many as we can come in there and plant, we're going to, evergreens, we'll be planting. We'll have to kind of work with the, it's a weird easement through there. And so we got to work with Duke Energies, but, and the city. But we intend to beef that up. And another goal, and I said this at the council meeting, I mean, we're going to, we've already, if you're, if you've been by there, we've already been working on all of the exterior fencing, trying to get it back up. It was in fairly derelict condition. So we've been going around, trying to clean it up, patch it up, get it new. And then our intent, and I've already started working with a sign company, is to work with staff and clean up the, the visual front along Fairview. We want to put a sign there, not a monument sign. So we're thinking we can build it into the corner there at MiniMac and, you know, potentially have some brick introduced and some others to clean the look up for Fairview.
That's all I've got.
Kenny?
Yeah, thanks again for the presentation. So just for my clarity, all these beige-colored buildings, they're already existing?
Correct. That's all the existing.
You're just adding the pink?
Yes, sir.
And then you're going to extend MiniMac?
Yeah, I mean, MiniMac goes down to the property line currently and just dead ends right now. And so we'll be basically creating a cul-de-sac there.
Okay. And you don't know if that power line, is that a distribution line, or is that a transmission line?
One of them is just servicing our buildings, and the other one is a distribution line. It's not, it's not a regional distribution, but I think it services, there's two kickers that go to homes to the east. So we know that it's servicing some of the homes. But there's also a smaller one that comes same, you know, same, down the same easement that comes onto our property.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have anything else, Tom.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chip?
I think I'm good.
Okay. Take me through your gates again.
Yes, sir.
All right. So the, you're putting in a new gate. You're on the McWherter property. They used to use that for storage back behind there, right?
Correct.
And so you just took care, you took over that storage area they had back there where it had all their stuff?
Yes. You're talking about behind, yes.
Yeah, where you're going to have your, your vehicle storage?
Yes, sir.
So your gate, your new gate is going to come off of where? The one for that lot?
All right, there's, yeah, we'll have to, let's see.
If you move your mouse, it will show it, so they can see it on their monitor.
Yeah, if you look, and, oh, there we go.
Yeah.
Right there.
So that, that comes off of Lawyer's Road, though, right?
That, that entrance comes off of Fairview?
Right.
That's not our, I knew what you meant.
Yeah, there you go. 218.
Yes, sir. And that's not our primary, but we wanted to have two, two full access points just for circulation. And again, you know, boat and RV, there's a place that can come out there.
Okay. So your primary to get there is over here by your office building, and then you come in and take a left and wander through here, I guess?
Well, you have, we'll have a gate here, right here at the front. So this is our office.
Right.
Parking for the office. And then we have a gate here. And then we have a gate here at, which will be at the end of MiniMac. And that will be our primary access point.
Okay. So now, where will the cul-de-sac be that you talked about?
And?
Somewhere in there?
Right there, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. And the cul-de-sac is big enough for fire truck to turn around if it had to, or whatever the case may be?
Yeah, we, we're looking between that and the hammerhead, but we believe that it's going to be the cul-de-sac. I think it just makes more sense, and we've got room on our property of which to make it happen.
Right, okay.
And that'll help. I mean, the fire department's got to drive through, but regardless, I was there a couple of times, and people drive down there and realize that they got.
Doesn't go anywhere.
They didn't go anywhere. Exactly. And they turn around and the fire department.
Yeah, okay. That's all I have. Anybody else? Everybody good? All right. If we have no further discussion, then I'll entertain a recommendation on ZZ 23-2.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a recommendation. Case ZZ 23-2, located at 8227 Fairview Road on parcels 1390111, 0923112, and 47.
Receive a favorable, favorable recommendation. Uh, ZZ 23-2 is found to be consistent with the land use plan. The land use plan indicates industrial light. Light industrial areas are intended to support a mix of innovative businesses that can benefit from the co-location of related complementary industries. The mix of uses range from light industrial operations and marker spaces to supporting office, retail, and service uses. Therefore, ZC 23-2 is found to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information presented and reviewed with this pres, with this petition.
Can I get a second to that motion?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? So the motion carries. Thanks for your presentation.
Have a good evening.
Yes, sir. Okay. Moving along. Item C, discussion of decision on S 23-1 McEwen Manor filed by Erie Properties for the preliminary subdivision approval, property located at 11631 Lawyers Road, tax parcels numbers 19701142, 45, and 16. John?
All right, so everyone should be familiar with this. This is McEwen Manor. Uh, this was approved in 2020, uh, after a long rezoning. Uh, it took a while to get through. And, uh, it later came back, if, as you might recall, um, they converted the private alleys to public alleys, and there were also some changes that were made. Uh, one in particular, if you look closely at the crest, where it connects to Crescent Hill Drive, you'll notice the little circle, little traffic circle. So that was something the board wanted. Um, but this, what, what, tonight was before you is really what I was talking to you earlier about, is that the planning board still has to approve, although this was approved through rezoning, the planning board is required to authorize the actual subdivision. So this is why it's before you tonight. This is what you're seeing right here on the screen. This is the latest and greatest. Um, the only thing I'll maybe draw attention to is, uh, you'll notice, if you look at the other plan I included in your packet, you'll notice it had more greenways along the creek. The applicant, they're still working on that. It's not shown on this plan. They're gonna actually come back as a, as another plan to put in that greenway. Um, so I don't want you to think it's not gonna happen. It is. If you look at that, uh, that, uh, I think I put the original zoning plan in there. You might notice that there's a greenway that runs across that creek. So anyway, the applicant's kind of working through some challenges with that, but other than that, I think this is pretty straightforward. Um, happy to answer any questions. I have the applicant here tonight as well.
Okay. Eric, uh, Chip?
So John, are we looking at, at three entrances into this neighborhood? Looks like two off of, possibly, is that Lawyers that is...
Yes, yes, sir.
And the one, uh, going past Chick-fil-A?
Crescent Hill, yes, sir.
Okay, and that's, that's the only three?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had. I was...
Well, you might note, I mean, there's a future connection in the back of the site.
Right, right.
But, yeah, that's probably a long ways off.
Yep. That's, that's all I had. I was just a little confused on the entrances.
Kenny, anything?
Yeah, I've, just from my own knowledge, what was the conclusion on the water and sewer services on the alleys?
Um, well, changing it to public is what helped, so, um, so that's all been resolved. So at this point, uh, they're really waiting for the sewer project. There's a sewer project that is in the works. I think it's probably starting summer. Yeah, so we're getting really close. And once that sewer project happens, they'll be off and running. So that's really what they're waiting on now. They're kind of at the mercy of the sewer.
Yeah, that's all I've got.
Got it, yeah. Eric, anything?
I don't have anything to add.
Yeah, I don't have anything on this one. So this pretty much follows what was originally presented.
Yes, it does.
Other than the cul-de-sac, I mean, roundabout.
The greenway, the greenway is the only thing that looks a little different on this, but like I said, they're gonna come back and deal with that with them, um, with their construction plans.
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't even look, the, the turnout's here, when you come out of the both roads, you can go either way on, uh, Lawyers Road? There's no restriction of right-to-right or...
Uh, did they make you put a medium in one of them?
Uh, the, yeah, so I believe the north entrance, there is just right out only.
Yeah, I remember that being a conversation.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. All right, uh, unless somebody else got something else, uh, can I get a, uh, what are we looking at? Give me a, a motion onto the decision for McEwen Manor, ZC, or S 23-1.
Uh, Chairman, I'd like to move for a favorable decision on S 23-1 McEwen Manor, uh, for preliminary subdivision approval for the property located 11631 Lawyers Road. Uh, tax parcel numbers 19701142-45 and-16.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? So the motion passes. All right. All right, John, anything else?
Yes, sir.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn? Nobody wants they love it. They love it here.
Motion to adjourn.
You gotta get a second.
Second.
Kenny seconds. All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
If you oppose, too bad. Okay.